Members of the Board, please return to the dais. Members of the Board, please return to the dais. Thank you. Board members, can we get you to the table, please, so we can begin the budget hearing? Board members to the table, please. Ms. McLaughlin. You can go ahead and get started.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's public hearing on the fiscal year 21 advertised budget. As this year's budget chair, I want to thank all of you on behalf of my colleagues for taking this time this evening to come and speak to us about our budget. Tonight, we have 39 registered speakers. Each speaker is allotted three minutes, and to be respectful of everyone, we ask that you stay within that time limit. The timer will start when you begin speaking, and the buzzer will sound at the conclusion of your three minutes. I will begin by announcing three names and the speaker numbers at that time. When you hear your name, please move closer to the front of the auditorium so you'll be ready when it is your turn to speak. If speakers are not here when their names are called, those names will be called again at a later time. If you have not registered to speak tonight but would like an opportunity to address the Board, please see one of the clerks over here near the clock to sign up for one of the five extra speaker slots. Your name will be called after all the registered speakers have concluded. Also, there is an opportunity for individuals to speak if there are no-show speakers, those that are remaining at the end of the hearing. After all of the registered speakers have addressed the Board, I will announce whether there are any no-show slots available. For this, we will ask that you state your full name at the time that you speak, and after you've spoken, please see one of the clerks so that she may collect your contact information for our records. Throughout the evening, you may notice that Board members will leave the table at times, but they will have access to a television that is broadcasting our public hearing. I will now call the first three names. I have Jessica Davis, followed by Danielle Reixey, followed by Kimberly Adams.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Davis, and I'm an eighth-grade student at Rocky Run Middle School. As a student who has been part of the SCPS On program since a very young age, I can say that technology has enhanced my learning significantly. The laptops that we received opened another world of possibilities for us. They allow students and teachers access to multiple resources and programs. One of my favorite resources to use is the online textbooks. If I ever have a question at home or need help with a specific topic, I can pull up the online textbook without a problem and have access to lessons. In a similar manner, I can use the county's databases in order to do research with a reliable source, something that we are taught very early about. A popular tool that teachers and students use is Google Classroom. If you are not familiar, Google Classroom is a tool where teachers can post lessons, homework, and even announcements all digitally. The assignments and lessons usually have digital notes or papers attached to them for us to fill out. When we are done, all we have to do is hit the Turn In button. This brings me to my next point. Computers help with organization. Students and teachers can make calendars and agendas online to track what they have to do. Computers also allow me to have multiple assignments in one place rather than tracking down many papers. I can simply remember to charge my laptop at night and bring a computer to school along with a smaller binder. Another beneficial product of technology in classrooms is how it accommodates for many styles of learners. For me, I'm a very visual learner that prefers to see things in pictures and diagrams opposed to long texts. Technology helps me achieve this in many ways. One example is in science with digital labs. A fun digital lab that our class recently completed was on circuit construction. In this lab, we had to make different circuits, and when it was done, a digital light bulb would light up and demonstrate the flow of electrons throughout the circuit, something that I would not be able to see in a real lab. Finally, one of my favorite parts about technology is how it allows me to interact with my peers better. Many times, we have been assigned group projects that are online. Google Drive allows us to share documents with other students so that we could work with one another even out of school. It is beneficial that every student receives a laptop out of school because there is less and less situations where students have to share the computer with their sibling or wait for their parents to come home in order to use the laptop. Google Docs also has commenting and suggesting features, which means that my partner and I can work together even without having their phone number or knowing them well. This is a really great feature because it helps us communicate and collaborate better, two of the portrait of a graduate's skills. As you can see, I believe technology helps students reach their full potential in learning and should be funded in their budget throughout FCPS. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jessica. I now have Danielle Reixey, followed by Kimberly Adams, followed by Carla Acucci.
Good evening, Fairfax County School Board members. My name is Danielle Zumi-Rixey, and I am an eighth-grade student at Lake Batic Secondary School here to address the necessity and benefits of technology in the classroom. I've been born in the generation who does not know life without technology. As technology is an essential element in everyone's life, it has become a vital engine of education in the classroom. I have used a computer in every single one of my classes, yes, even gym. Technology has revolutionized the way we present projects, write essays, communicate, submit assignments, and more. Now, we can make a final draft without rewriting the essay and submit tests that are instantly graded, lightening the workload of teachers. We can do creative things with coding, presentations, and websites. Technology has opened a whole new skill set, and it can possibly impact how students, like me, learn in the classroom. I use technology for everything. It helps me to do my best in and out of school. Quizlet, a popular app, allows me to use flashcards, practice tests, and games to study material for quizzes and tests, and with Google Classroom, I can easily access resources and agendas my teacher posted online to continue working. But that's just at home. In the classroom, technology is used for so much more. We can easily follow along with the teacher saying and what is being displayed on the board when we can see it close up on our computers. In English, we use computers all class, and we always perform activities where we work on a specific focus on a slide in this class slideshow. This activity improves my learning experience, not only because I can work on it at home without using extra materials, but it's easier to format and make changes on the slideshow, and we can work together on a project without getting in everyone's way. I'm more of an experimental learner, and when I hear what grammar rules are and how they work, it doesn't affect me. But when I start using them and seeing how they fit together, I can begin to understand. Though this can be done on paper, it's not the same as the ease this can be done on and with technology. And 99% of the time, that worksheet originated online. This way, we cut out the middleman and conserve our resources. Technology has helped me to excel at school, and it's not only me. Everyone has been affected by technology. Countless assignments are submitted from students over Google Classroom every day, and we can instantly collaborate on the Google Drive by sharing documents and slides. I come home, and 50% of my homework is online. This dependence on technology can only strengthen, and as it improves and newer, more efficient devices are made, technology will not only become a necessity but a lifeline. Sometimes, though, we don't have the materials needed to do all these things. In civics or science, our computers are not the best, and the battery drains quickly, the computers are slow, and some of the chargers don't work. Sometimes, I need to print something or work on a task early in the morning, and the library computers don't load in time for me to accomplish what I need to do. So I became in the habit of bringing my own computer to school on purple days to work on in the morning and in my classes. As you can see, technology is not only important outside of school, but it's also vital in the classroom, and we need to be able to use it. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. I have Kimberly Adams, followed by Carla Acucci, followed by Kevin Hickerson.
Good evening. Chairman Corbett Sanders, School Board members, Dr. Brabrand, Budget Chair Megan McLaughlin. My name is Kimberly Adams, and I'm speaking as President of the Fairfax Education Association. I want to begin by thanking Chairman Karen Corbett Sanders, Lead District Representative Tammy Daranak-Kofax, and At-Large Member Abraar Omish for joining us today in Richmond. Abraar rallied the crowd as she led chants and spoke about what our future classrooms could look like with more funding. It was quite the lobbying effort and rally. More than 2,000 educators and their supporters descended on the Capitol, and the FEA appreciates that you were there, both in spirit and in person, supporting this Fund Our Future movement. I'm here tonight to speak on the proposed FCPS budget, which our superintendent's budget proposal is positive and makes progress on our most important issues: salaries and benefits. We understand that the current budget proposal is tempered by the resources that we will likely or not receive from the Board of Supervisors and the state. As we move forward, FEA implores you to continue pushing, push forward for the best that our district can offer to students and staff. Most notably, we need to keep smaller class sizes in mind as our students' learning environment has a huge impact on outcomes. We need to incentivize high-quality substitutes to come to FCPS so our students don't miss out when their normal instructor has a health or family issue to deal with. We need to keep pushing to make sure that all of our employees make a living wage and are able to live in the county in which they work. On the other side of the scale, we need to remember that we do not give step increases to those with the most experience in their profession at the top of the scales, so market rate adjustments are incredibly important. We also need to make sure that we keep appropriate resources in your staffing reserves. In addition to the strictly financial proposals, we need to continue to increase avenues for employee input and improving our working environments. Reviving the School Employee Benefits Advisory Council, or C-Back, would go a long way toward having your employees' voices represented when determining benefit packages. Similarly, FCPS had an Organized Abandonment and Redesign Task Force, or OR, where frontline employees had the opportunity to give unvarnished feedback on the success of projects and initiatives, had input into which should be kept, improved upon, or in fact abandoned, in favor of more successful avenues. Workflow continues to top our list of concerns, regardless of opinions were requested by the stack, FCPS's surveys, or FEA's own surveys. While data-driven instruction is useful, we need to stop requiring staff to collect data for data's sake. We have initiatives overlapping other initiatives at this point, and we could use these resources far more efficiently. Please know that as you push for additional resources that we need to solve these problems. The FEA stands shoulder to shoulder with you every step of the way, locally and at the state. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Oh, no worries. We understand. All right, so I have Nora Molnar, followed by Cheryl Binkley and Jenna White.
Hi. Nora Molnar, picking up from where I left off at the CIP hearing, and I'd like to incorporate those comments and those exhibits into the record of this hearing as well. This, the good news about what I had to say is that we, I believe we have the money in this budget to pay for in addition for both, for McLean High School. It's just currently earmarked for another school. If you look at Exhibit H, this is the cash flow projection in the CIP. This exhibit takes, adds $20 million to the West Potomac addition, but I haven't found an explanation for why that is. Last year's CIP, the West Potomac addition cost $16 million, and the year before, it was $13 million. I'm not understanding why it's brought to $20 million, and it's not referenced in the list of major projects in the budget either. If you look at the Exhibit I in the proposed budget, it lists the justice addition at $14 million, which also, I think, might be wrong. Based on last year's CIP, doesn't call out the West Potomac addition. But the real problem, putting aside the fact that we don't know where this, I don't know where this money's coming from, is that the West Potomac addition is being built out to a design capacity of 3,000 students, which is directly contrary to your FCPS regulations and policies, which says the maximum size for your schools at the high school level is 2,500 kids absent extraordinary circumstances. I've been doing a deep dive into this for the last couple of months, and I can't find anything justifying extraordinary circumstances taking this school to 3,000 students in a school system where all schools are supposed to be at 2,500 students. I have found some downsides. West Potomac, as far as I can see, doesn't even have 3,000 students. Mount Vernon could take all of the extra West Potomac students, and both schools would still be significantly under capacity for the next foreseeable future. And finally, West Potomac is not in a major development zone anywhere near the size of Tyson's Corner, so they're projected to stay under capacity for a while. And recently, at a meeting I saw, I think it was Ms. Corbett Sanders questioning whether the wisdom of taking an elementary school to 1,000 students on the grounds, you know, whether you can adequately serve those students if the school is too big, not to mention pushing other schools further down in the renovation queue. And I would submit that that same logic would apply at the high school level. This Board has wide discretion, but that discretion is not unfettered. The decisions that you make have to be rationally based and consistent with law. Virginia law only permits redistricting if it contributes to the efficiency of the school system. To make a decision based on evidence that you know to be faulty and no evidence at all, that would be abuse of discretion, and that would be reversible error. So I'm asking you, if you know of any evidence to justify extraordinary circumstances, we would like to hear that now so we can have an opportunity to respond to it. But to make a decision based on this record, to me, and I will just close that I'm leaving you with the decision from the '80s, despise you until, you don't ask yourselves, do you want to buy yourselves into another decade of litigation, like what happened with the Linsford case?
Yeah. Thank you very much, Ms. Molnar. I appreciate you coming out this evening. I have Cheryl Binkley, followed by Jenna White, and then Emily Vanderhoff.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Gibbs-Binkley. I am the current president of FEA Retired and a co-founder of Virginia Educators United that helped kickstart the movement last year to press the state for more money for our schools. I retired from FCPS at the end of the 2016 academic year and continued to be certified in five different areas as a teacher. First, I want to say how happy I am to see you, the members of this Board, sitting where you are. I believe we have some of the most qualified and hardest-working people we could hope for this round. And having worked and watched many of you during your campaigns, it's clear to me that you are dedicated and love our system and our kids, and I'm deeply grateful for that. I'm also very pleased that our school board is looking more and more like our wonderfully diverse community. I chose to live in a diverse community, and I'm thrilled to have our Board represent that. My words this evening, I want to reinforce what Kimberly Adams had to say about the dollars stuff, but I have a few cautions. Not so much about specific line items in this year's budget, but about the emphasis that our strategic plan lays out and the conditions under which our employees and students currently work and learn. First, almost all of our employees are overworked, and in spite of county attempts to raise salaries, they're still underpaid compared to their college graduate peers. And our support employees have a hard time living in the county because we border on not having a living wage in a number of places. A survey FEA did this fall revealed that overwork is the first concern of most of our members. And this is due to class size rises over time, flawed class-size formulas, increased uniform assessments in addition to the excessive testing and the data collection that goes with that, a loss of experienced mentor teachers to help our youngest teachers get acclimated and get grounded, cuts and caps on support staff that have lasted over 10 years, and a self-inflicted shortage of qualified substitute teachers, unfortunately. Though the county voices a wish to change the culture, unfortunately, our school-based administrators are struggling to create positive, healthy learning and working environments, in some part due to a business-style training model. At any rate, I would remind you about the premier workforce training, that the arts are a workforce. They, we have over
Thank you, Ms. Binkley.
$370 billion in work that is done through the arts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Jenna White, followed by Emily Vanderhoff, and then Norman Hall. Is Jenna White here? Okay. We will then have Emily Vanderhoff, then Norman Hall, and then Leslie Houston.
Hello. My name is Emily Vanderhoff, and I'm a first-grade teacher at Hunt Valley Elementary School. This morning, I shared a document with the school board outlining FCFT's priorities for the FY '21 budget and our suggested solutions to our four major concerns: student behavior and discipline, teacher planning time, the substitute shortage, and pay for teachers at the top of the salary scale in retirement. I'm here at long with other FCFT members to bring our concerns and solutions to the Board. The issue that I will be speaking on is planning time. Dr. Brabrand made a point to mention in his presentation of the budget that the greatest portion of money in the budget is going toward the goal of attracting and retaining a premier workforce. However, there is no item in the budget that accounts for the factor that is causing the greatest number of teachers to burn out and leave the profession: growing workload coupled with a lack of planning time. In partner with FCFT, I created a survey to gauge teachers' experience with planning time across the county. 625 FCPS teachers responded to my survey. I have shared the report of the results with the Board. The results that I think is the most telling from the survey is this. When asked, "Can you consistently complete the required duties of your job within the current amount of planning time built into your schedule?" Only 5% of elementary teachers and 12% of secondary teachers responded yes. Elementary teachers are reporting spending an average of 11.4 hours per week completing required duties of their job outside of their designated 7.5-hour workday. And secondary teachers are spending an average of 10.2 hours per week. This points to a system-wide problem that requires innovative solutions. FCFT has outlined several possible solutions in the document shared with you today. For today, I'll focus on budgetary solutions, and I hope to discuss non-budgetary solutions with you all soon. One solution is to add a monthly early-release day that would be designated as unencumbered, teacher-directed planning time. This would allow for teachers to regularly do the deep thinking necessary to provide quality instruction such as implementing PBLs. Having a monthly early-release day for teacher-directed planning time would also create more equitable planning time for special education teachers, who often do not have a designated planning time during the school week, and are asked instead to take a sub-day and write sub-plans in order to get any planning time during their workday. Our second suggestion is to pay teachers on a 12-month contract to compensate for the work they are already doing unpaid outside of the 7.5-hour workday. As I mentioned, elementary teachers are working an average of 11.4 hours outside of work every week, and secondary teachers are working 10.2 hours. Over the course of our 194-day contract, this adds up to 59 extra workdays that the average elementary teacher is working unpaid every year, and 52.6 extra days for secondary teachers. In the 2020-2021 FCPS calendar, summer, winter, and spring break all add up to a total of 54 workdays. So the time teachers are working unpaid is enough to account for all of the major school breaks we have during the year. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Emily. I now have Norman Hall, Leslie Houston, and David Wallrod.
Good evening. I'm Norm Hall. I'm speaking tonight as an individual to share my thoughts about the FY '21 budget. If you're wondering why, it is in part because I feel responsible as somebody who's been involved with advocacy with the Fairfax County SEPTA for three years. But the deeper reason I can provide for the "why me?" question is the work of noted psychologist Howard Gardner in How People Change Minds. Typically, you would find parents and teachers with narratives to explain their support or opposition to various budget measures. And then there is an approach that focuses on specific research where data is plentiful, and after validation and analysis, it can tell stories for support or opposition of these same measures. And even better is when this approach leads to graphical depictions for the visual learners. But I follow a different path, which I think is possible because I know that we have way too many stories for all the stakeholders, for those involved with students with disabilities, and they are not mine to tell. Also, I follow a different path because of the necessity to get around the obstacles imposed by the lack of data that would be integral to the best arguments about what to do that would be better for students. I am a supporter of systems analysis and believe it is possible to follow the path of reason that Howard Gardner also describes. I can do this because I have been an FCPS insider for years and have followed the school board's actions beyond the terms of two-thirds of you and the tenure of the superintendent. In short, I understand the context of the budget decisions you will be making. I know the competing priorities for the future needs of FCPS and the need to make sure that Fairfax County's budget plan will be commensurate. Given major unmet needs of special education, it is critical that additional funding for special education be available. Good news, the superintendent's budget proposal provides a good starting point for next year's work. I think there are many reasons I think there are many reasons to believe that the proposed addition of 70 special education chairs in elementary schools will greatly increase the capacity of instructional staff to focus on identification and evaluation of students, improve participation in IEP meetings, and delivery of instruction and assessment in ways that to support the individualized student plans. Could this be transformative? Will we see approved academic and social, emotional outcomes? I think so, especially if our hopes for a full and independent audit of special education are realized. While there may be an ongoing and worsening shortage of special educators to be hired and retained, and while there may need to be adjustments to the caseloads of different categories of special ed teachers and support specialists, there is not really a shortage of experts in the Metro DC area and neighboring states who have knowledge of best practices. Let's put them to work. Keep in mind that it was just a few days ago I decried the lack of students with disabilities when expert presentations, the focus on, excuse me, students with disabilities when expert presentations were made about the equity issues related to the advanced academic programs and the disproportionality of discipline that relates to time out of classrooms. I appeal to your reason. Support the one Fairfax, every student, every need. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Norman Hall. Leslie Houston followed by David Walrod and then Lenny Wolf. Leslie's unavailable? Okay. So do we have David Walrod? Great. Welcome.
Good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is David Walrod. I am a math and special education teacher at Lake Braddock Secondary School, and I am representing the Fairfax County Federation of Teachers. I'm speaking today about a critical but often-forgotten part of district operation: our substitute teachers. Because of a shortage of substitute teachers, our students get underserved at all parts of the district. At the elementary level, classes get divided up between multiple classroom teachers, causing disruptions among an entire grade level. Special education IAs get pulled to cover classrooms, which can impact IEP hours. Secondary teachers get asked to cover colleagues' classes during their planning time, which can cause teachers to fall below the planning time requirements from Regulation 442210. On a recent survey regarding planning time, 24% of secondary teachers report frequent loss of their planning time due to covering for their colleagues' classes. While Dr. Braband's budget does include money for training of substitutes, it does not directly address the shortage of substitutes. To this end, I'd like to propose points to improve both the quality and quantity of the available substitute pool. First, substitute pay should be raised to match Montgomery County Public Schools. While FCPS pays short-term substitutes $14.50 an hour, Montgomery County pays non-certificated substitutes $18.41 an hour. Our long-term subs earn $20.50 an hour, while Montgomery County pays $26.28 an hour for non-certificated teachers. In both cases, Montgomery County pays over $1 more for teachers that do have a certificate, so the difference is even greater at that point. Along these lines, we also ask for higher pay for experienced subs. Prior to 2016, retired teachers earned $22 an hour. Today, they earn $20.50 an hour for short-term assignments. We ask that this be increased to pre-2016 levels along with an appropriate cost-of-living adjustment. We also ask for adjustments for licensed teachers, retired instructional assistants who return to FCPS, and substitutes for our hardest-to-fill positions: special education teachers and IAs. Finally, we ask that, out of respect for teachers willing to sacrifice their planning time, that teachers receive compensation equivalent to the maximum sub-rate when a teacher takes on a substitute class on top of their regular duties. Please help our students avoid disruptions to their schedule by helping to ensure an active and skilled substitute pool. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you very much, Lenny Wolf. I now have Nancy Trainer followed by, oh, I'm sorry, no, we have Lenny Wolf right here.
Thank you for holding this public hearing. I've been a Fairfax County taxpayer for 30 years. Both of my children graduated from the county school system, and I live in Stella Pokarski's Sully District. I come to make two points about the school budget today. First is to support vocational education under the Career and Technical Education Program. I believe this program can provide an opportunity for kids to find out that they may be good with both their hands and their heads. This can show them a path towards a career that will support both them and a family. It is not easy to replace it by robots in the future. It may also help keep certain kids engaged in school when academics is brought into the workshop. This can help raise achievement levels and also reduce dropout rates. I recently had my heating system in my house serviced, and it was done by an Edison Academy graduate. A few days later, I had my hair cut, and it turned out it was done by a Chantilly Academy graduate. Both of these young people had an opportunity to discover future careers in the CTE program, and they found out what they both enjoyed and were good at, what they were doing. As an interested member of the public, I've attended two meetings of the school board's CTE Advisory Committee. I've been impressed by the engagement of the community and also the command of the existing program shown by Coordinator Beth Downey. This program shows a very strong base, and I think we can only get, it can only get better if the budget maintains its support. And if the school board needs another member of this committee, I'd be happy to volunteer. My second point is the concern over the proposed 6% budget increase. This is faster than median wages are rising in the county. I believe that before asking for more money, the school system should be required to first find deficiencies and show this to the public with the advertised budget. A major corporation which I'm familiar with requires managers to find 3% to 5% efficiency improvements each year in good times and in bad before asking for budget increases. I think this would build trust with taxpayers before being asked to pay large tax hikes. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wolf. I now have Nancy Trainer followed by Arthur Purvis followed by Alexa Crizell.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nancy Trainer, and I'm co-chair of the Education Committee of the Fairfax County Federation of Citizens Associations. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the Federation's Board. We would like to commend the proposed budget's continued focus on maintaining instructional quality by improving teacher and staff compensation. We agree that FCPS must place priority on attracting and retaining the finest educational personnel, and so we must pay our staff like the professionals we know they are. Since salaries comprise just one element of employees' total compensation, however, we also urge you to explore options to create more flexible compensation packages. Younger employees may have different needs than employees close to retirement, and creative compensation packages could help retain and recruit staff without any additional spending. This is a suggestion we've offered in the past, but with so much new energy on the school board, we hope you will engage anew to ensure that the entire bundle of employee benefits remains responsive to an evolving marketplace. On this subject of our evolving marketplace, we would like to renew our suggestion that you establish a Department of Strategic Planning and Innovation to support IGNITE, which is the name for FCPS's strategic plan. We believe it is essential that FCPS keep abreast of market challenges and trends and also create a system to measure and monitor strategic success so that our schools' investments are made well. Such an office could help ensure that strategic thinking and innovative programs are implemented consistently and in a relevant way within the organization, that we are thinking at a higher level than budgets often inspire. We continue to appreciate FCPS's support for the Federation's legislative package. Our joint work in Richmond during the last legislative session helped provide FCPS with the freedom we had long sought to determine our own starting date for the school year. In 2020, we are both seeking to equalize the revenue generating authority of counties with that of cities. Such authority could help diversify the county's revenue base, which could in turn improve funding for our schools. We will also work to increase the state's funding for students who receive free and reduced-price meals, asking the Commonwealth to provide such funding on a per-student basis. Given the vast sums that the proposed budget requests, we hope this board will continue the previous board's commitment to fiscal responsibility. We commend Dr. Braband and his staff for working closely with County Executive Brian Hill and his staff to jointly plan budgets, and we call on all of you to intensify such collaborative work between FCPS and the county. In the past, we've seen great benefits flow from a close relationship built between each district supervisor and his or her school board counterpart, and we hope that our new school board members will engage in such a spirit of partnership. Thank you for your time this evening, for your collective service to our children in our community, and for all the time you spend on various school matters. We look forward to working together to help support our schools.
Thank you, Ms. Trainer. I have Arthur Purvis followed by Alexa Crizell and then Chris Neesley.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent, my name is Arthur Purvis. I address you as President of the Fairfax County Taxpayers Alliance. The one Fairfax policy adopted by the supervisors and school board is a stunning admission that decades of strategies to end racial inequality in the schools are a failure. SAT scores show that overall achievement is low. The average SAT score for Fairfax County seniors is at the 76th percentile. To get into UVA, you have to be at the 95th percentile. Virginia Tech, you have to be around the 85th percentile. You can get into lots of colleges at the 76th percentile, but their four-year graduation rates are under 50%. Years ago, as a scoutmaster, I was helping one of your middle schoolers prepare a menu for a campout, and we had nine persons going, and we agreed each would get half a pound of hamburger. So when I asked him, "How much hamburger did we have to buy?", his answer was, "I can't figure that out." My observation is that your high school seniors do arithmetic at the fourth-grade level. The low achievement African-Americans and Hispanic students is evident in the fourth-grade SOL reading and arithmetic scores, which shows that our schools are not teaching reading and arithmetic properly in early elementary school. This is due to the century-old adoption of the John Dewey Progressive Education Curriculum, not to be confused with the Dewey Decimal System. Dewey threw out phonics, replaced it with whole word. He opposed arithmetic drill, which has created a STEM crisis. Whole Word has given us a nation with 14 million dyslexics, and he replaced unbiased history with atheistic social studies. This discriminates against, this favors affluent white and Asian students who can learn phonics and arithmetic drill at home, and discriminates against low-income, predominantly Hispanic and African-American students who do not have the same advantage. Money is not the solution. Since the first school board election in 1995, the budget has increased from $1 to $3 billion, or $1 billion more than needed to keep up with enrollment and inflation. Staffing has increased from $17,000 to $25,000 or $3,000 more than required to keep up with enrollment. According to the dictionary, a racist is a person who discriminates against people of other races. Your early elementary school curriculum discriminates against African-Americans and Hispanics and also has a negative effect on whites and Asians, which results in the overall low achievement. And this can be fixed. All you need to do is bring back phonics and arithmetic drill and unbiased history in early elementary school. It would probably erase racial inequality in the school system and probably in our society, and it should be fixed before this school system receives any increase in funding. And I close by noting that the presentations of the Fairfax County Education Association and the Fairfax County Federation of Teachers did not find the low achievement and discrimination against blacks and Hispanics worthy of mention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Purvis. I have Alexa Crizell followed by Nick Neesley, or Chris Neesley, and then Kathleen Dukeny.
Good evening. I am a parent of a fifth grader at Canterbury Woods Elementary School and upcoming PTA president, as well as a member of the Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee. It is an exciting time for FCPS. This budget starts the process of responding to many of the needs of our students. However, it is important not to become lulled into not reaching for all that we can. So I ask that this board take bold steps to articulate the true cost to educate students. What should we really expect to be funded by FCPS as part of an alignment to one Fairfax? Should the classroom tools, such as lab equipment, furniture, and musical instruments, be considered core to educating our students or be left to our PTAs to fund? What should we consider basic requirements to educate and provide a quality and learning experience across the county? We must use the totality of data, county budget, principal budgets, PTA, and booster contributions to conduct this analysis. This was an action that was started, I believe, by Sandy Evans. This will help the unevenness in the learning experience across the county is addressed. Lastly, I ask that we look to the future budgets to speak to the impact that automation will have on our children, requiring deeper focus on skills development and new innovative strategies to ensure all of our students, particularly those at risk of not graduating, are not left behind, believing that the opportunities that exist today will still be there for them in the future. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Ms. Crizell. I have Chris Neesley followed by Kathleen Dukeny and then Kathleen Mallard.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. My name is Chris A. Neesley, and I am a biology teacher at Twain Middle School. I'm here before you today to speak about an often-neglected topic in budget conversations. We hear about how Fairfax County Public Schools is making progress towards offering competitive take-home pay, and I'll be honest, as a teacher, I'm a huge fan of take-home pay, but I'm here today to bring attention to take-home work. I am a hard-working teacher who is passionate about making learning come alive for my students. Last year, I was named Virginia Agriculture in the Classroom Teacher of the Year and a USDA Excellence in Teaching About Agriculture Award winner for 2019. I bring this up only so that you know my criticisms of take-home work do not have to do with a lack of wanting to work my hardest for our kids. During my undergraduate teacher education program, I was part of a cohort that made field observations in Chicago Public Schools. The thing which was most memorable to me was the burnout of the teachers. Teachers had too many non-instructional tasks, too many students in each class, and too little time. Despite being offered a higher starting salary, I declined an offer from Chicago Public Schools to accept an offer across the country with FCPS. Take-home pay is an important part of the equation, but it isn't the only factor. FCPS has a reputation for providing support for our teachers, staff, and students, and that draws in talent. During my eight years with FCPS, I have seen my take-home work steadily increase. I am now taking home the most work since I did as a first-year teacher. The support for teachers which first drew me to FCPS is now eroding. FCPS teachers are now responsible for CTE/Team meetings, IPRs, communicating with parents, grading, instructional planning, IEP and 504 data tracking and meetings, and covering other teachers' classes when no substitute is available, all within one class period's worth of time. Some of my colleagues now have full days where they do not have any of the unencumbered planning time, as stipulated by FCPS Policy 4422.10, or the 30-minute paid duty-free lunch period, as stipulated by FCPS Policy 4421.19. There are days when I do not leave the school building while the sun is up. I would like you to please consider the following three solutions to this critical issue. One, a budget allocation to each administrator for IPRs which take place outside the school day or for IPRs which are not evenly distributed across staff. Two, an amendment to FCPS Policy 4650.5, which would allow for instructional staff to be compensated for any IPRs which impede their unencumbered planning time, including substitute coverage or lunch duty. Three, increased funding for staffing to allow for more instructional assistants and classroom teachers as a means of providing students with more one-on-one attention, to facilitate better data tracking, and to reduce individual workload among staff. If we don't make strides with reducing take-home work for employees, we will lose talented staff and fail to recruit new teachers. Despite my passion, my current workload is unsustainable, and I may have to leave the profession in the coming years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Neesley. Kathleen Dukeny followed by Kathleen Mallard and then Mary Whirl.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Duchenee, and I teach at Holly Elementary School, and it was nice to see you the other night at the PTO meeting. Thanks for coming. Excuse me, I have a cold. I'm here to talk about the increase in incidence of students experiencing mental health crises in our school. It is a major concern, and teachers are not adequately trained to deal with these issues. We need training. These students deserve our support. They need it. They need to receive teachers who know how to handle these escalating situations. As a result of these mental health crises, the other students in the class are being disrupted, and their learning is, you know, being affected. It's a dangerous situation sometimes. Students need a trusted adult. They need trained adults to help them in the classroom. We believe- We believe that school counselors are the key to teaching these students the skills they need. We also believe that all staff would benefit from further training in de-escalation strategies. Teachers and IAs are usually the first ones present in these situations. All staff needs training for behavior intervention and de-escalation. So we have a few suggestions. Mandatory training on SRNR Handbook and discipline procedures for our administrators. This would happen during the summer before we come back to school next year. We believe that the county needs to establish consistency from school to school, and they need to know the steps in handling discipline referrals. This will begin with providing clear expectations to administrators. Staff training and school-wide discussion on the SRNR Handbook and discipline procedures should be the first week back to school and part of our training that we already have. We would like to establish a consistent set of procedures, starting off right from the beginning of the school year. We should have a designated person who's responding to an issue when they're not available. We should have designated people who can handle these issues that teachers are unable to do. We also would like to have more academy classes or courses on de-escalation strategies and behavior interventions available to staff. It is a real crisis in our school, and e-learning videos are not going to do it. We need to have hands-on training, real professional training in this area. I just think that research-based intervention is the way to go, and we really appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, Kathleen.[722.23][722.23](APPLAUSE). I now have Kathleen Mallard, followed by Mary Whirl, and then Callie Ottinger.
Hello, good evening, Superintendent Braybrand, Chairman of the Board, and other members of the School Board. Really, your undertaking with the detailed fiscal 2021 budget for FCPS is to be commended. Looking over, there were a few things that I noticed, because I speak to you as a taxpayer in Fairfax County for over 40 years, as well as a parent of three former FCPS students. One of the things I did want to bring up is that I see that there's a couple of areas. One was the proposed funding for other initiatives, such as $0.013 million for substance abuse prevention specialists. I live near McLean High School, and I think that's a very important issue. I sometimes walk through McLean High School. I no longer have children there, and I pick up litter because I want to help my neighborhood. And I have found, what, those plastic bottles, you know, that several...on several occasions, four or five occasions, little plastic bottles on the school grounds that have holes burnt into them. In other words, they're being used...my daughter told me, "Those are bongs." I had no idea. So I think that's a very important area to look at. Another is, I noticed that you have, not a big-ticket item, $0.013 million, which would include a recruitment specialist to launch a "Call Me Mister" program, a nationally-recognized program. I think that's a great idea, too. I think we need more male teachers. Something did occur to me, though, and it's not a criticism, but, you know, I think you might have some teachers who don't want to be called Mister, even though they may be Misters. So I think you better...should be aware of that. It may cost you...it's ironic that FCPS has pushed a transgender ideology, so that's something to be concerned about. Another is, when my daughter was at Longfellow School, she, you know, she came home one day, and she said, "I'm not special ed. I'm not French immersion. I'm not ELL. I'm just a regular student." And we noticed her grades were being affected, because the emphasis was not on...all the time on regular students. She did go to private school. She ended up going to UVA for two degrees, and then the Chicago Booth School of Business. So she was a bright student, but we recognize that there's a lot of emphasis on, you know, the students with special needs, there should be gifted, advanced placement. So thank you very much. I don't have any real recommendations about that, just awareness raising. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mallard.[918.23][918.23](APPLAUSE). I have Mary Whirl, followed by Callie Ottinger, and then Gladys Villalobos.
My name is Mary Whirl, and I'm a sixth-grade teacher at Timberlane Elementary School. I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I stand in solidarity with the Fairfax County Federation of Teachers. I'd like to speak to you this evening about the ramifications of our current salary schedule that goes only through Step 23. Previously, longevity steps guaranteed increased income through Step 29. I am in my 23rd year of teaching, although because of step freezes in the past years, I'm at Step 22 on the pay scale. This means that next year will be the last year I can expect to get a step increase from Fairfax County Public Schools. While this will affect me for only a short time until retirement, younger teachers in this county will see significant impact on their earning power and pensions over the years. Teachers hired after 2010 are not eligible to retire until their age plus their years of service adds up to 90. With this requirement, a teacher starting their career with FCPS at age 22 would work for 34 years to age 56 before they could be eligible to retire. They would have 11 years without a step increase at the end of their career. This significantly stunts their retirement base pay, which affects the money they receive from their pensions for the rest of their lives. Pensions for teachers hired after 2010 are based on the average of their highest five years of pay. Comparing the highest five years of salary on the current pay scales for FCPS, Loudoun County Public Schools, Prince William County Public Schools, and DC Public Schools, FCPS fell short in terms of annual pension for both BA and MA lanes. The difference is most stark when comparing FCPS with Prince William County. According to FCFT calculations, the lifetime compensation of a pension based on the current fiscal year 20 salary scale in Prince William County would pay teachers over $390,000 more in dollars in the BA lane, and over $312,000 more in the MA lane compared with the pension calculated using the FCPS fiscal year 20 salary scale. Loudoun County and Prince William County have 30 and 32 steps in their pay scales, and also compensate their teachers at an increasingly higher rate as they reach the top of the pay scale. Additionally, Loudoun County announced in December 2019 that their proposed budget will raise teacher salaries across the entire pay scale to 5% above the region's market average. If FCPS wants to retain quality teachers, we need to adjust the salary scale to remain competitive with surrounding school divisions, and to ensure that our most experienced teachers are fairly compensated for their expertise and continued service to the district. Thank you.[1099.33][1099.33](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Ms. Whirl. I now call Callie Ottinger, followed by Gladys Villalobos, and Pama Galieta.
My name is Gladys Villalobos, and I'm here first. Good evening, Superintendent, Board members, and FCPF families. I am a parent of a Hispanic Special Education student at Justice High School. Our Hispanic population of taxpayers at Justice High School is more than 50% since 2015. For each student, the county receives more than $12,000 a year for the government, and if the student's in Special Education classes and receives free lunch, even more. Many Hispanics are quiet individuals who work more than 10 hours a day, pay taxes, and make less than $30,000 a year. Many of these parents, because of our culture, we believe in trust teachers and school decisions for the schools...for children's education. However, the 50% population of Hispanic students who attend Justice High School are not receiving college readiness classes. Only 1% is able to acquire these classes. Students do not have equal access or motivation of lack of opportunity of classes offered. Hispanics, ADHD or ADD students have been ignored. Today, we...what can we do as a community to help teachers, school board parents, and students to connect more roots to the Hispanic students and help them by providing opportunities for learning in school and outside, with a vision of work habits, positive winning attitude they need to take and learn to be successful? I ask you today to look at your self-reflection. Who helped you, motivated you, or inspired you in a positive way? Now, the Hispanic population has grown in Virginia and many states. Today, I ask you for the future of our country, to help a majority of our community, which are Hispanics, at Justice High Schools. I plead you to not ignore us. We can all do amazing things if we feel supported, trusted, and inspired. Today in 2020, I would like for you to support organizations like CACAN, which is an organization that supports not just Hispanic family by providing classes, leadership, scholarships, parent activities, and resources for all ages of school, like the one they have at Justice High School, Start Program. However, they need funding to be able to serve more than 15 students now enrolled. EduFuturo is another program that provides leadership classes and workshops for students. I wanted to see them come, inspire, and motivate our students who are struggling. LULAC is a League of United Latin American Citizens who offers leadership conference for youth, self-determined, to come also and be classes for not just disabled students, but also for students who need motivation and to be determined. Hispanic...more Hispanic teachers that will provide cultural awareness and social justice in a positive way to students to promote good citizens in America. I ask you today to provide opportunities for students to feel proud of who they are, Hispanics which are hard workers, inspiring, smart, passionate, ambitious, nice, compassionate, and servant of community.
Thank you, Ms. Villalobos. Thank you so much for joining us.[1312.42][1312.42](APPLAUSE). And I would like to call Pamela Galetta, followed by Elizabeth McDowell and Luke Williams.
Hi, good evening. My name is Pam Galieta, and I'm the School-Based Technology Specialist, ESPIT, at Rocky Run Middle School. I'm a former high school special education teacher who aspired to the ESPIT role because of the positive impact that I believe technology has on teaching and learning. I served as an ESPIT at the elementary school and middle school levels for almost 10 years, eight of which have been at Rocky Run. When I reflect on my time supporting instructional technology, I'm amazed at the pace in which technology evolves. While I struggle to keep up with it, I notice that our students seem to effortlessly adapt and adjust quickly to these changes and rapid evolution. This solidifies my belief that we must embrace these changes in our roles as educators. I have supported FCPS ON at Rocky Run Middle School for four years, and I'm here tonight to share why I believe FCPS ON should be implemented at all middle schools and FCPS. As middle school educators, we must support our students as they transition from having one teacher in elementary school to seven teachers in middle. Shortly after we navigate this change with our students, we must then begin to prepare our students to become more independent as they move on to high school. Vertical articulation, I believe, is imperative to this process, and without access to the same tools at all levels, we will not have the opportunity to intentionally plan and prepare our students for high school. Equitable access to resources solidifies the potential of our collaborative teaching teams to plan quality instruction without barriers. Access to technology is no longer a factor when in planning for instruction, and this increases our teaching team...teacher team's efficiency. The result of this is equitable access to learning opportunities and collective responsibility for all students' success. Our teachers are experts in planning quality, blended, and engaging instruction. I want to honor the hard work of the teachers and teams at the middle school level who have been innovators and leaders with FCPS ON by sharing that they will be significantly impacted by the decision to expand FCPS ON. All of our students need guidance to help navigate the digital world, but middle school students benefit from both guided support and independent practice. Without equitable access to digital tools, it's not possible for our teachers to consistently implement these critical learning opportunities. Clear guidance and strategies can be provided when we can be sure every student has the same access to technology, both at school and at home. Our top-notch partners in IT have demonstrated their commitment to supporting our students' online safety, as they have listened and responded with action to the unique needs of our middle school students. Equitable access is imperative to truly nurture the shared partnership between families and schools, critical in developing digital citizenship with our students. Please consider the opportunities and positive outcomes that can be realized should we continue to collaborate as a district and move forward with FCPS ON in our middle schools. Thank you.[1496.83][1496.83](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Ms. Galieta. Elizabeth McDowell.
I'm Elizabeth McDowell, the School-Based Technology Specialist at Kilmer Middle School. Two years ago, I was a high school history teacher at Chantilly, experiencing one-to-one for the first time. The experience transformed how I communicated with my students and the way they were able to express their learning. Students were able to collaborate more easily through the variety of Google tools at our disposal. Despite having access to a screen, the collaborative nature of those assignments prompted greater face-to-face discussion, as students were able to immediately respond to each other's work. Writing quality improved as students provided each other feedback and wordsmithed to a greater degree. At Chantilly, I was introduced to concepts like flexible seating for the first time, and was able to see the larger scope of FCPS ON. The devices do not replace good learning; they support and equalize it, while also fostering creativity in our students. While I was already on the path to becoming an ESPIT, it was the excitement and transformation I witnessed at Chantilly that helped me make my final decision. When I made that transition in 2018, I intentionally looked for a middle school. The idea of building relationships with a community while also building our capacity for one-to-one was an exciting challenge. Our staff has met that challenge. As a single example among many, this past year, we purchased a school license for the tool PairDeck. Our civic CT requested a training not just on how to use the tool, but specifically how to use the tool to better incorporate Portrait of a Graduate skills and concepts. Their focus is on how to use this technology to foster growth in our students, not on how to use technology. For several years, the anticipated timeline for middle schools going one-to-one was fall of 2020. For several years, we have planned our technology budget with this in mind. The computers currently in our building are old. They don't hold a charge for more than 45-minute class period, which makes it difficult to use them for a full day's worth of lessons. Because students share devices, the memories hold profiles for many individuals. This makes them slow to load. It can take up to 10 minutes for a student to log on. That's 10 minutes our students could be focused and learning. If FCPS ON is delayed for another year, we will have no choice but to purchase new devices for our building. If we then turn around and purchase one-to-one devices a year later, or keep delaying this decision, is this fiscally responsible? If we pull back on how many devices are available for students to use in the classroom now, we will lose the momentum, progress, and growth we have made towards this transformation. Learning digital literacy is like learning a language. It must be practiced and applied on a regular basis. This is a skill our students desperately need to be able to function in today's society. We provide our students with the equitable capacity to learn this language, to become creators of content, not passive consumers. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.[1695.11][1695.11](APPLAUSE). Mr. Luke Williams, followed by Tamara Hannah and Elizabeth Evans.
Good evening. My name is Luke Williams, and I'm the Science Department Chair at Rocky Run Middle School. Over the course of the last four years, I have supported the implementation of FCPS ON, and I'm here tonight to share with you why I believe FCPS ON should be incorporated in all middle schools in Fairfax County. As educators, FCPS ON has enabled us to create learning experiences that are more engaging and tailored to individual students' needs. It has facilitated the diversification of our instructional materials and provides students with a more engaging and interactive learning experience. The provision of FCPS ON devices not only allows students to have greater choice in the resources they can use to learn from, but it has also enabled us to give students more control over the pace of their learning. No longer do all students have to progress through...together through a single lesson on the board at the same time. They can now individually review a range of materials, both within the classroom and at home, at a speed that suits them and their specific needs. On a more personal note, FCPS ON has not only allowed me to better diversify my instruction to meet individual student needs, but it has also opened up entirely new possibilities for assessment and data analysis. New assessment methods, such as Google Forms, EdPuzzle, and quizzes, to name a few, have been incredibly powerful, and have provided me with a means to collect and analyze assessment data quickly and easily to better inform my practice. For example, I can give a test within the first 10 minutes of a lesson, and by minute 11, I can look at the data and use it to find out which students I need to remediate and help out quickly and easily. This is something that was not possible prior to the implementation of FCPS ON. Overall, I cannot overstate how significantly FCPS ON has transformed my teaching practice. Overall, I cannot overstate how significantly FCPS ON has transformed my teaching practice. In addition to assessment and resourcing, the way we distribute assignments and materials to both students and parents has vastly improved. The greater use and implementation of virtual learning environments such as Google Classroom into daily instruction has allowed for a far more effective course communication and resource distribution, which has enabled both parents and students to easily find class information and resources quickly. As educators in 2020, we are currently working with the generations of learners for who technology is simply second nature. No longer, when students want to learn something new, do they read for a textbook. They are much more comfortable going to YouTube or Google. And if we wish to remain competitive as a school system in the digital age, FCPS must not do itself a disservice by removing a tool so powerful and vital for student learning in the 21st century. Please continue funding FCPS ON in Fairfax County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Tamara Hannah, followed by Elizabeth Evans and Larry Little. Ms. Hannah?
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight about the importance of expanding funding of the FCPS ON program to our middle schools. I am currently the School-Based Technology Specialist at Key Middle School. However, until this fall, I was a longtime social studies teacher at Lee High School. Lee was among the first schools in FCPS to be fully one-to-one. This evening, I would like to share with you my personal one-to-one journey as an example of the growth in teaching and learning that can happen with equitable access to one-to-one. Five years ago, I was ready to leave teaching. I loved my students and colleagues, but the day-to-day work felt redundant and inauthentic. Due to the content pressure in the SOL and IB courses I taught, large chunks of class time were devoted to content delivery, to the detriment of student growth and 21st-century Portrait of a Graduate skills. Going one-to-one dramatically changed my teaching. We changed the classroom. Students were able to choose their space based on their personal and learning needs, rather than sitting to see a board. We changed our learning structures. Students accessed content through guided research instead of endless PowerPoint notes. Through the magic of the Internet, I was able to replicate myself delivering content and instructions, and students could access that information when and where they needed to, inside or outside of the classroom. When students learned to be responsible for their own content acquisition is when the big changes started. Our grading practices were no longer aligned with the work that we were doing, so we refocused our grading around the skills that we now had time to practice and fully embed in our daily learning. Skills of research and inquiry, communication, collaboration, and critical thinking, the same skills echoed in the Portrait of Graduate and IB curriculum. Our time working with our librarians and researching increased; students wrote and collaborated more. Our classroom moved from a train track where everyone learned together at the same speed to a tree. We were all growing together, with course content as the core element, but with room to grow along our own branches and at our own speed, depending on need and ability. These changes happened in nearly equal measure in my senior IB diploma courses and in my ninth-grade classes with Gen Ed students and ESOL cohorts. I now had the time to have meaningful conversations with students about their work and growth, and best of all, my students learned to self-assess, identify goals, and lead conferences to discuss their own work and growth in skills. All of this was possible because FCPS ON gave us the time, choices, and consistent resources necessary to make real changes in our classroom. Now that I'm the ESPIT down the road from the high school where I worked, I can see the need and desire in teachers in my building to make these kinds of large changes, and to prepare our kids for the future that they're going to move into as they move through high school and then out of high school, to be prepared 21st-century citizens. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Larry Little, followed by Karen Frank and Gina North.
Good evening. I am the aforementioned Larry Little, and I'm with FCFT. I've been teaching for forty-two years, and I have a lot of experience with a wide variety of schools and school policies. Some have students and teachers' interests first, and some don't. And when I say teachers here, I'm including IAs, librarians, counselors, et cetera, the entire professional staff in schools. I'd like to talk to you about two FCPS policies that don't have teachers' interests first. These are questions of right and wrong, and I'm hoping you can fix them. Number one, at retirement, restore salary steps lost due to past budget freezes. Due to budget cuts in the last decade, the county froze or delayed step increases and/or COLA for all staff members ten times. According to the Salary Services Office today, in 2009-10, there were no step increase or COLA. 2010-11, the same. 2012-13, no step increase and a 1.25% COLA. 2013-14, no step increase and a 2% COLA but delayed until January. 2014-15, step increases delayed until November for teachers and IAs, and delayed four months for others, but no COLA. In 2017-18, regular step increases, but no COLA. So over that nine-year period, that's four years with no step increases, four years with no COLA, two years with delayed step increases or COLA, and two years with subpar COLA. After each of these years, the right thing to do, the teacher's first thing to do, would have been to make up for these freezes as soon as possible. Teacher pay should have gotten an extra boost in each of the following years until teachers recovered their lost income, but it didn't. Now, just as an example, due to those step freezes, we have teachers who have worked for FCPS for twenty years who are only on step sixteen instead of step twenty, and everyone went without a COLA or had a delayed or subpar COLA for six years. Together, these represent a significant loss of income, not just for the years involved, but for retirement as well, since retirement pay is based on the highest five years of income. We recognize that the county is unable to monetarily compensate these staff members for salary increases lost over time from this setback. We instead ask that the county restore the lost steps upon the employees' retirement. This would allow these staff members to base their pension on the salary that they would have reached if not for the years of stagnation. This will ensure that these employees do not continue to suffer the consequences of these past budget costs with a reduced pension for the rest of their lives, on top of their salary already lost. Number two, ensure that the MSA matches that of other Fairfax County employees. I'm not going to have time to read this. Just let me point out that the proposal for teachers currently is 1%, but the teachers at the top end of the scale won't be getting their step, and so all they'll get is the 1%. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Little. Karen Frank, followed by Gina North and Stephanie Bilmoria.
Good evening. My name is Karen Frank, and I'm a School-Based Technology Specialist at Lake Braddock Secondary School. This position affords me a unique perspective, because I see the impact that FCPS ON has on instruction on the high school side, as well as the potential for it on the middle school side. It is because of this perspective that I strongly urge you to fund FCPS ON at the middle school level. As educators, it is our job to prepare our students for life beyond school. FCPS' Portrait of a Graduate encompasses this. Teaching students how to communicate, collaborate, think critically, and be resilient global citizens in a digitally-connected world is, in my opinion, our most important task. Technology and our interaction with it will only continue to grow. Because of this, it is imperative to have the resources and technology available to help our students learn to navigate this increasingly digital world. What I see when I work with Lake Braddock High School and middle school classes is a technological divide. On the high school side, teachers are using technology to expand students' learning outside the walls of the building. They are also teaching them Portrait of Graduate skills in a digital context. They are providing students with feedback and correction when their choices don't reflect these skills in a safe environment. Additionally, they are creating more student-centered learning environments in which students have control over different aspects of their education. This student control increases engagement and gives students ownership over their learning. Further, it helps foster initiative which will support them in the workforce. In contrast, on the middle school side, teachers are trying to foster the same skills and create the same student-centered learning environments but are hindered by our aging technology and lack of resources. The age of our mobile labs caused delay in technology access, as well as inequality and inequity between middle school classes. This internal inequity and inequality is in addition to the inequity with the high school side of the building. Our middle school teachers are especially adept at creating these student-centered learning environments through the eighth-grade capstone and various project-based learning units throughout the school. Providing them with FCPS ON devices will remove the inequity of devices and allow middle school teachers to continue to develop these student-centered learning environments. To close, I'd like to reiterate the importance of developing Portrait of a Graduate skills while students are still in school. Starting this process in middle school will give students more opportunities to develop these skills and learn how to make good choices while using technology. Exposure to these Portrait of a Graduate skills and digital citizenship skills over six years, rather than just four, will allow students to develop them more deeply and be prepared for whatever lies ahead of them after their formal education ends. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you so much, Ms. Frank. Gina North, followed by Stephanie Bilmoria and Colin Verbekar.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Braybrand. I would first like to welcome all the new board members. Thank you for your service. I'm hopeful that with new faces, we may see some changes coming in Fairfax County. My name is Gina North. I am here to talk about the proposed budget. I spoke at a board meeting last year about how understaffed our special education departments are at the elementary school level, so I was encouraged to read that there was additional money proposed in the budget. I was also disappointed to see that only large schools will benefit from some of this funding, specifically that being given for local screening chair positions. As the local screening chair of a smaller school, I may not be as far underwater as my counterparts at larger schools, but do not think for one second that I am not also drowning. I continue to be frustrated by watching decisions being made by people who do not know what it is that I do each day, so allow me to give you some insight into the amount of work that goes into this position. Since we came back from winter break, I have gotten into work early each day just to try and keep up with local screening: responding to emails from teachers, responding to emails from parents, scheduling meetings, opening processes and C stars, and completing lots of paperwork. An hour later, I am not done, but it is time to go greet students for the day. So I then must use my precious planning time to try and complete the rest of those tasks. I am expected to also be a full-time teacher, and I do need to plan lessons for the fourteen students with IEPs that I work with each day. I often have fifteen minutes of planning time remaining to do this once I am done working on local screening tasks. Starting Wednesday of this week, I will be giving up part of my lunch and part of my planning time, because by name and by need, there are students whose needs are not being met. We have identified six new special education students so far this year. We are screening four more as we speak, and another five have been referred. There's more coming. I attend multiple CLTs per week so that I can be present to hear any concerns teachers have with students in their classrooms. I collaborate with teachers to help plan interventions and progress monitoring for students. I also help them communicate with parents, because some of these conversations are very tough to have. This is something that I believe makes me a more effective local screening chair, but it takes time. I am working two jobs for you with no relief in sight. I am very appreciative of the fact that elementary special education will be receiving more funding, but it is not enough. There is a lot of effort being put into recruiting new teachers, but what are we doing other than raising salaries to keep the good ones we already have? On every engagement survey, we tell you we need more resources. Every year, we tell you the workload is not decreasing as promised but growing. You need to do better for the people who work with your most challenging students and for those students themselves, because the ones who suffer the most by the lack of staffing are the students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. North. Stephanie Bilmoria, followed by Colin Verbekar and Joanne Walton.
Hi, good evening. I'm Stephanie Bilmoria. I am the IB middle-years program coordinator at Lee High School. I've been at Lee sixteen years, nine years of those teaching biology, and the last seven as the coordinator. I come to you to also encourage you to support FCPS ON, as I'd like to share a couple of things that I've experienced over my seven-year, or at Lee High School, as a pilot to the e-learning Backpack Initiative. I've worked with, in my role, I get to work with a lot of teachers in many different groups, and through that collaboration, we are always trying to meet IB and FCPS goals. And during this collaboration, I get to witness teachers using and increasing their use of technology because their students are using technology all the time. So I see them integrating it into the unit planners that we are required to do for IB, and teachers are teaching teachers in these schools also, again, because students are accessing technology so much. We had a particular teacher who was, didn't want to use a particular program that we were trying to push through, because it was a really good program, and he allowed the ESPIT and I to come into his classroom and be a student while we kind of taught the lesson. And he's one of the biggest advocates for parts of this program now, and he pushes it out to his students and other teachers, and so teachers are becoming the voice of technology also. Our teachers are continually stepping up their game to stay current with technology. We also have something called the Demo Slam every now and again, where teachers will highlight a particular program or their favorite tech tool. And this, if you know anything about high schools, we tend to stay with our departments, but this allows teachers to really collaborate across departments and cross-curricularly, because they're now meeting people outside of their comfort zone. So what does this all lead to? Really, student achievement and access. Students are, because of teachers really pushing, being able to access technology themselves, they're then able to meet the needs of their diverse learners. Students are using tools from all levels. There's a, one of my favorite tools is called vocabulary. My third-grade student uses this tool, and I helped an ESOL Level III student use this particular tool to highlight his learning about computer hacking, something that he chose to learn about. And then we also had an IB student use this exact same technology. So students are having the choice and being able to demonstrate their knowledge in ways that they haven't been able to do before. So I come to you, speaking as a parent and a teacher of FCPS, to encourage you to continue to support FCPS ON.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bilmoria. Colin Verbekar, followed by Joanne Walton and Shane Zavala. Okay, Colin is not here. Joanne Walton?
Hello, good evening. Welcome to the new members. Thank you so much for your opportunity to speak this evening to the school board and Dr. Braybrand and to the staff. I just wanted to come in support of more funding for inclusion, and specifically, inclusion supports in our schools, like inclusion specialists. I just wanted to share really briefly my son's experience with inclusion. So my son, I actually am the parent of two special-needs kids, two twice-exceptional students, and my son, when he was, he turned three, and like his father, he began reading and writing, and he did four years of preschool with no problems. He went to kindergarten with twenty students in the classroom, and he spent most of kindergarten under the table. So we took him out, we homeschooled him in 2013. I met a lot of homeschoolers. I think there was over three thousand homeschoolers at that time, and most of every kid I met was twice-exceptional. I was actually quite shocked by that. So fast forward, we got him privately tested, we did a summer clinic for an IEP, and we had him placed in a CSS site, fortunately about one mile from my house, from my base school. So essentially, the CSS, for those who don't know, is a comprehensive services site. So he started there in third grade, and at the end of third grade, he came home and he said, "Mom, I'm so excited. I want to try cello." I said, "Okay, great, great. We have your IEP coming up." You know, we sat down in the annual IEP meeting. Okay, so, you know, he wants to do cello. Oh, no, no, no. No, 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 no. He has ADHD behaviors? No. And I'm like, thankfully, I knew better. So I pushed back, and I said, "Well, you know, you guys took him to the assembly. You guys told him about cello and how great it is, so we need to at least try." So that summer, we got private lessons, and, you know, we pushed back a little, and they were, "Okay, we'll try it, we'll try it." So he did cello. He went to the first concert. I went up to the strings teacher, introduced myself. Hi, I am Theo's mom, and she said, "Oh, my gosh, that kid, he has perfect pitch. That's really rare. He's a really great cello player. He needs private lessons." And I was like, "Oh, okay." So, great, you know, everything's going well. Fast forward to the end of fourth grade, we were told, we kept receiving notices that he qualified for advanced math. So at our school, we're a local Level III AAP, so that means kids don't get advanced math till fifth grade. So, you know, great, he's qualified for advanced math. We go to the IEP at the end of the year. Okay, so tell me, you know, how does advanced math work? I'm getting all these letters. He's qualified. Oh, no, no. Oh, no, 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 no. He can't do that. He's got ADHD behaviors. No, no, no. I'm like, "Well, I'm sorry, but we, we need to at least try, right? He's willing, so, you know, let's try." So sure enough, he goes, math teachers like, "Huh, I'm not seeing any of these ADHD behaviors." So he did advanced math, and I just want to encourage you to-
Thank you very much, Ms. Walton.
More, more support for inclusion. Thank you.
Let's follow up with Shane Zavala, Katie Moreffi, and Dave Swan.
My name is Shane Zavala. I'm currently in Espitz over at Liberty Middle School, and I'm going on a decade in the county, and all of it has been at middle school, and almost all of it has been oriented around the integration of technology at the middle school level. During my time as classroom teacher at Rocky Run, I was very fortunate to have some of the first integrated devices that were dedicated to the classroom. And during that time, I really saw a lot of experimentation for myself, and over the course of five years, I really felt like at the end it propelled my, my learning opportunities I was giving the students. That experience made me want to become a school-based technology specialist, and went over to Key Middle School. And one of the things I noticed right away is there was an inequity between the schools. Key had technology, but the age of it was very clear, and then because of that, that led to decreasing opportunities. So despite that hurdle, though, I saw teachers have an innate desire to really try to create these powerful learning experiences, but the devices weren't the tool that was necessarily supplying that opportunity. So when I went over to Liberty, one of the things I have noticed is that all these schools have one thing in common, is they want to provide these experiences. But the problem is, is pockets of it in these schools because we don't have equity in devices. And that's why I'm coming here tonight, is because I believe the first foundational step in this journey of equal education that's meaningful for students is making sure they have access to the proper tool. So when FCPS ON was announced, we hoped that would solve this issue. It allowed us, it would allow us to prepare all students for all the skills they need to succeed in the future. These skills are not unique to technology, and I will admit that, but technology greatly enhances them. Middle schools have made decisions for the past two years around this premise. We've made budget decisions, we've made instructional decisions around PD, and at this point, we have pockets of excellence and are ready to go and expand. Not moving forward with FCPS ON will have some impacts in terms of the building. One of the most obvious ones is we have resources that are digitally based, and pulling back on this would cause teacher frustration. And we don't want that because hopefully, we don't want it to impact the student learning at that point. We aim to achieve high standards in 21st century, and technology exists, and that's a tool that is a key component to that. There's no question about the disruptive nature of technology. It transforms almost everything it touches, amplifies the good and the bad. Education is not exempt from this trend. There is no illusion that FCPS ON will not be supported by all our stakeholders, and it will not be immediate or easy impact. However, the most meaningful change is done by taking these small steps that add up over time. Middle schools have been making these changes for the past several years. If FCPS ON is not approved, we deny our students the tool that so many of us rely on our job with. We deny them the opportunity to feel that sense of empowerment. We deny them the equal opportunity to a good education. FCPS ON is the catalyst that will amplify, amplify the good teaching practices that exist within this county. So please consider, continue with the FCPS ON funding, and thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Katie Moreffi, followed by Dave Swan and Summer Johnson.
My name is Katie Moreffi, and I'm a school counselor at the only middle school that is designated Title I at Edgar Allan Poe in Annandale, Virginia. School counselors are a catalyst for firsthand prevention to many common discipline and behavior issues that are faced within our schools. We devote time and we teach resilience to our students using solution-focused counseling techniques and research-based practices. Simply put, counselors get to the root of the behavior, and they set a plan to address that behavior in partnership with teachers, administrators, and parents. As a middle school counselor, I identify the barriers to learning, which are trauma or sometimes mental illness, and I advocate for students of the, advocate the students for all stakeholders. Our Signs of Suicide Prevention Program, or SOS, data indicated that our school alone, seventh grade only, there was a high need of mental health intervention and follow-up of critical social emotional needs. In fact, our Student Services Department interviewed 70 students and connected these families with mental health resources such as short-term behavioral health, the Community Service Board, and Northern Virginia Family Services. As just one counselor serving 330 students, somebody who have been deemed at high risk and may need follow-up and intervention, I know that I'm limited in providing the level of service and attention that they deserve. And this represents one of the lower caseloads that I've had in my career. Over the past nine years, I've had caseloads as large as 550 students. Counselor ratios of 500 to 1 are common in FCPS, and the ratio tends to get, be highest in the elementary schools. According to the American School Counselors Association, the recommended ratio is 250 to 1 counselor. The hiring of additional counselors at elementary and middle school level would largely contribute to increasing high school graduation dates, rates, and it would also mean that you're a proponent of saving lives within our schools. Dr. Braybrand's proposal includes $6 million as placeholder for staffing initiatives, which includes 1.4 million of hiring school counselors. I urge the school board to consider increasing this amount to 2.4 million so that the school counselors can devote more time on mental health crises in our school. The counselor ratio of 250 in 2022 that is proposed by Governor Northam is coming. Finally, I would want to encourage, thank you.
Thank you so much. Dave Swan and Summer Johnson.
Members of the school board, Dr. Braybrand, and all support employees, I am Dave Swan, Chairman of the Support Services Employees Advisory Council. The SSEAC, representing over 40% of all FCPS employees, endorses this budget that so closely matches our strategic plan. We agree with Dr. Braybrand's priorities of first, getting the pay right for our current employee positions to hire and retain the best; second, to properly staff programs that are important to, like reducing class size and maintaining our facilities; third, to develop the plans that will most benefit the students in the system. Issuing the STEP increase in the MSA is an implied minimum statement to meeting the first priority. Many of our exceptional employees have stayed with FCPS during years in which no STEP or MSA were issued while surrounding jurisdictions met their pay scale obligations. We watched while other counties expanded the pay gap with FCPS, resulting in an expensive study three years ago and an even more expensive process to move our pay scales back in line. Your employees count on this board to be paid fairly and consistently with the programs that you have established. Let's stay the course on this most important priority. Last year, you recognized that it has been 20 years since we brought the pay scale of our over 3,300 instructional assistants to just 50% of the lowest teacher scale. There's a plan to get there in two more years, but we encourage you to add the $2.7 million to get there this year at a minimum. A decade ago, the Gibson Study proved that cuts to our maintenance staff is out of line, and deficit spending on preventative maintenance is unsustainable and requires attention. Today, over 25% of our school buses and over in between 40 and 60% of our custodial and food service equipment is beyond their expected life cycle. This budget takes a small step in addressing this. Perhaps soon, we can do better. The Trades for Tomorrow allows us to prepare our students for a solid career outside of the college path and capture their talent to become our employees in jobs that are increasingly difficult to fill at FCPS, where over 50% of our tradesmen can retire in the next five years. Let's expand this to IT, administrative, food service, transportation, and other areas, where up to 25% of our staff could retire early tomorrow. Tying the strategic plan to our budget makes our priorities clear. We owe this to our taxpayers, as no county amenity benefits the quality of life and home values like this great school system does. On behalf of the SSEAC, I thank you for your service, consideration, and support.
Summer Johnson, followed by Duran Thompson and Jennifer Lorenz, who were added this evening.
My name is Summer Johnson. I'm currently an educational specialist in the Office of Instructional Technology Integration. I was previously the school-based technology specialist at Lee High School when we became an e-learning backpack school as part of the first phase of FCPS ON. Tonight, you have heard firsthand how important it is for all students to have equitable access to a device, but also that FCPS ON is about a lot more than just that device. And I'd like to reiterate that point by highlighting a scene from one of my favorite TV shows, the acclaimed Netflix series Stranger Things. And I promise there will be no spoilers in this story that I'm going to tell you. But if you haven't seen the show, the premise is that it's a group of young friends, around 13 or 14, who discover an alternate universe, and then all the adventure, danger, and sci-fi awesomeness that comes next. I highly recommend it, it's a great show. The show also takes place in the 1980s, so when one character, Dustin, needs some answers about this discovery, he heads not to Google but to the library to begin his research. And at the library, however, he's turned away by the librarian because he has already maxed out on the number of books he's able to check out at one time. And so Dustin responds to the librarian, "My apologies. However, I am on a curiosity voyage, and I need my paddles to travel, and these books are my paddles." And so he ends up distracting the librarian and takes his stack of books, running away, yelling, "I need my paddles." So I get goosebumps watching this scene. I rewind it and I watch it a few times. I text some of my Espitz friends, like, "Do you watch this show? Because this episode is all about FCPS ON." And then I had to defend myself, like, "Hear me out, right? I'm not crazy." Now, first of all, we know that FCPS students already have access to great libraries and librarians that don't cut you off. But this scene really spoke to me because our students are on a curiosity voyage, and by continuing and expanding FCPS ON to all middle schools, all of our students will also have their paddles. And not some students having great paddles and other students having paddles that are broke or old or rundown, not just one paddle to share, but all students will have their paddles. All students will have their paddles and be able to stay curious, dig deeper than their textbooks, engage in meaningful learning, and reach Portrait of a Graduate. Our curiosity voyagers will have access to tons of information and the opportunity to not just consume technology, but to be creative and showcase their learning with digital tools, collaborate and get feedback, be empowered in their learning so that teachers, the ultimate co-captains and facilitators of curiosity voyages, can design meaningful, student-centered learning experiences that don't leave any students without their paddles. So I ask you to approve the budget that includes the expansion of FCPS ON. I also invite you to take a curiosity voyage into our FCPS ON schools and classrooms. Talk to teachers, students, principals, and see firsthand the amazing learning that's taking place. Thank you for your time tonight. I also like to give a special thank you to the students who spoke about their learning tonight.
Thank you. Duran Thompson, followed by Jennifer Lorenz, and then Adam Urbright.
Good evening. My name is Duran Thompson, and I'm a third grade teacher at Woodley Hills Elementary. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Tonight, I could talk to you about how I've worked for Fairfax County Public Schools for 19 years. I could talk to you about my responsibilities and how they have increased exponentially. I could talk to you about how I've gone from one CT a week to two, and the work that is required for those meetings that has to occur before and often after those meetings. I could talk to you about student discipline and not having enough staff or resources outside of the classroom teacher, outside of the classroom teacher to address the growing social and emotional needs of our students. I could talk to you about planning time, cafeteria duty, math night, parent engagement activities, team lead duties, PTA, parent conferences, and so much more. But what I want to talk to you about tonight is the feeling of being valued and appreciated, a feeling of being heard and knowing that someone cares. I remember several years ago during the first week of school, watching a video of a teacher, Rita Pearson. She has since died, but I remember her message to an auditorium filled with teachers. She spoke about how every student needed a champion, someone to get students to believe in themselves even when they knew they were rock bottom. She spoke about how she told her students that they were specifically chosen for her class because she was the best teacher and they chose the best students for her class. She talked about how students don't learn from people they don't like. She talked about how a student got a 2 out of 20 on a test. She put a plus 2 and a smiley face on the test and gave it to the student. The student said, "Ms. Pearson, is this an F?" She said, "Yes." He said, "Well, why did you put a smiley face on it?" She said, and I quote, "'Cause you're on the road. You didn't miss all of them. You got two right." She then said, "Now, when we, when we review, won't you do better?" And the student said, "Yes." She said, "Minus 18 can suck the life out of you, but a plus 2 says, 'I'm not all bad.'" I make the same speech every year since I've seen this video to my students. So tonight, I say to you, what does not receiving a STEP or any salary increase after several years of service say to me and so many others? It says minus 18 and no smiley face. But let tonight be a plus 2 and that we are on the road. I'm asking you tonight to be our champions. I understand there is a finite amount of money and resources, but I also know we find a way to do what matters most, and everyone wants to feel valued and appreciated. Thank you.
Jennifer Lorenz, followed by Adam Urbright and Bob Nelson.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Lorenz. I am the proud mother of two sons, Nathan and Noah, at White Oaks Elementary. Both of my sons are twice exceptional. Both have ADHD, and my older son, a sixth grader, also has Tourette's Syndrome and dysgraphia. My youngest is a two, is a second grader and is also bound for AAP. I know you've heard a lot of stories and a lot of requests tonight, and I'm going to add one more, but it echoes many of what you've already heard, and that is, please, consider funding for, for inclusion and support for, for kids with disabilities. I'll give you this story in a nutshell of what my students, my sons have been experiencing for the last six years. They both have ADHD. My older son has Tourette, as I said. Both have faced discrimination, derogatory comments, literally being told by staff members, "You're disgusting," on more than one occasion. They have been physically blocked from going to the bathroom, and we've had to write these into their 504 application, 504 accommodations simply so that they could access that basic need. What would that have been like? How would it have been different if the staff had been properly trained, if it had been institutionalized, if it had been standardized, so that they really understood what Tourette's Syndrome means, so that when he says something that he literally cannot control, because that is the definition of Tourette's Syndrome, they would understand that that's a neurological disorder and not behavior? How would they have been able to support classmates who don't understand that when he rolls his eyes or jerks his elbow, it's because it's a neurological disorder and not because he doesn't like them? Would he still have self-esteem intact as a sixth grader, getting ready to go into middle school, if he had the support and the training from people who understood that those accommodations were absolutely necessary and critical to his success, not only as a student, but as a, as a human, as a person? I can't tell you the comments my son has heard, my, both of my sons. And the sad part is that many of these have come from the administration and various staff members. They've had their desks taped when no one else did, and I could go on and on with stories that would literally take hours. If you're ever free on a Saturday and you have nothing to do, please give me a call. But this is what my sons are forced to deal with every day. And I'm asking you to include inclusion, support for training, standardize it, institutionalize it, make sure that our teachers and our staff have what they so desperately want. I've talked to multiple teachers at my son's school who said, "Man, I wish I knew what Tourette looked like. We could have caught it before he was in the third grade. What could we have done differently?" My son, as a third grader, stood before his class and said, "I have Tourette, and this is what it means for me. This is what it looks like." This is what it looks like. So when I roll my eyes at you, it isn't because I don't like you, it isn't because I have anything, that I'm thinking anything about you personally. I just can't help it. When we explained that a tick is something that he might do, we had one student who was absolutely convinced that he should just wear bug spray because that way he won't pick up ticks when he goes camping. But at least he was listening and we had a chance to explain to this young man who listened and then went forward and said, well, that doesn't sound like a big deal. Nathan's a pretty good guy. And yet, he's excluded every day on the playground. He can't play freeze tag unless he's the one who's it and only it. And when he reaches out and does something to somebody, he gets an AIA and is forced to sit and taken out of class for up to three hours because they just don't believe that that's what was going through his mind. And when they say, when he tries to explain it, they say, well, your disabilities don't matter. When you make a comment, it's not your disability that's at play here. That's not what's going on. It's not your Tourette, it's not your ADHD. How would it have been different if they had had proper training? Why did we have to spend three years fighting to get that when the principal could simply have asked for it from the county's own resources? And I'll leave you with one last thing. My husband has cerebral palsy. 45 years ago, he was denied a free public education because they thought he needed special education. 45 years later, his sons are being put in the same situation. He's a chemical engineer. What would that have looked like for him had he not gotten that? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lorenz. Adam Urbrik, and then Bob Nelson.
Good evening. Thanks to each of you for your service and to our community and for your resilient listening skills tonight for the 40th Budget Speaker. The first two student speakers had me at hello and I thank you for staying with me all the way to number 40. I know that budgets are filled with tough choices between competing good options with limited resources and it can be a little bit like deciding between Brahms and Beethoven. But FCPSON, which I'm here to advocate for tonight, is not a soft spot in the budget for such a choice. My name is Adam Urbrik, proud principal at Liberty Middle School, former elementary school principal and classroom teacher and FCPS employee since 2003, and I too am on a curiosity voyage. I'm here to advocate for the timely funding of FCPSON and with a little bit of tongue-in-cheek, I would start by asking half of you to consider conducting the remainder of your meeting without your technology tonight, right? It's not, not going to happen, right? Denied. That would be similar to what we are attempting to do in classrooms right now in schools where one-to-one technology is not in place while trying to help students achieve portrait of a graduate outcomes for every child regardless of their backgrounds. Now, if you're not as familiar with what one-to-one technology can do to unlock student potential even after several compelling speakers here tonight, there might be some reasons whispering to you in the back of your mind, why funding on this initiative could just wait for another year. There might be some misconceptions about screen time and social media, there might be doubt about whether it could actually transform instruction or improve student achievement results as, has been proposed. Or maybe it's just a practical question of what the harm could be in waiting one year when there are other investments that might feel more urgent. Those are understandable justifications from the surface. However, our middle schoolers would tell you that one year of delay is half to 1/3 of their middle school career. And while the time is accelerating these days, telling middle schoolers to wait one year would be akin to telling our founding fathers to put away their ink, quill, and parchment while they were crafting the Constitution and to share some of their resources instead. You know, today, our classroom, classrooms are filled with amazing things that are happening everywhere, but this tool specifically would liberate our students from a factory model of standardization, consumption, and conformity to a paradigm where multiple portals can be opened for personalized paths for learning and at each student's pace. It will level the playing field for students from disparate backgrounds, levels of privilege and abilities, and balance schools with unequal PTA fundraisers' budgets and resources. This investment is a rare win-win for the system, for students and teachers.
Thank you, number 40. And now we will move on with number 41, Bob Nelson.
Hey, I'm Bob Nelson. I got up here before and said I didn't really intend to speak and I didn't again. You might know Nora Mulner as the bad cop, but she's really good at data discovery, she's really good at appendices, she's emailed them to you. But I talked to her afterward and said, we got to find a win-win here. I used to work on the Hill, as I mentioned, and somebody that came in with a proposal was much more likely to accomplish a goal than somebody that came in and complained, right? So I sat down with her, pulled out a pen and said, how can we help the board come to a conclusion? I assure you, we didn't do this before. This is not like a plan. But I've got five points and you don't have to write anything down after three and a half hours because it's going to be emailed to you tomorrow. And it's all provable, it's all facts. You can decide if it makes sense or not because I'm 100% naive if this makes sense. Point one, apparently, there's 36 million in the budget scheduled for West Potomac to take him up to 3,000 students. From going to some of this data, it appears there's only one high school that's been designed for 3,000 people in Fairfax County out of 25. I said, when was that done? She said, 49 years ago. There's only been one school built above 3,000 in 49 years. Now, again, this is data, I may be wrong. The next point was, well, couldn't you take West Potomac down to the state, or to the county standard of 2,500 and move McLean up to the standard of 2,500? Wouldn't that 36 million be well-served to be split? Because if I was a West Potomac parent and somebody came to me and said, we're going to build you a school that's bigger than any school in Fairfax County built since 1970, I'm not sure I'd think that's great. Now, again, you know this stuff, you're professionals, I do not. So the next point is, there's also apparently 7.5 million of what's called cash proffer money, this is not my world, that's designed for McLean. So all of a sudden, you've got 18 million and seven and a half that you could use to accomplish a couple of goals. You could get two schools in Fairfax at the right number of students. You could get McLean's people happy by doing a, what's it called, an addition. And apparently, you wouldn't have to do a border change, making a lot of really good parents and happy people, or, you know, people that are, want to be happy, want to support the county to solve a problem there. So I think this sounds like something that could work, but again, I'm not a pro, you guys figure it out, you know if the numbers are right, but it does seem like the potential for a win-win. With that, I seed back 40 seconds so you can get home 40 seconds early. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of my school board colleagues, I want to thank every one of you who came out this evening to our public hearing and for sharing your comments and concerns. Your voices matter. This Thursday, January 30th, the school board will discuss the superintendent's proposed fiscal year 21 budget. School board members may submit various amendments to this budget before its final approval next Thursday, January 6th. Sorry, February 6th. At this point, we wish you all a great evening and thank you again for joining us. And board members, I just want to make sure everybody remembers, we do not have anything until Thursday evening.